Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 17, 2023 Board of Commissioners Meeting. It's lovely to see so many people in the audience this evening. Not seen that in a while, so welcome to you all. The first item on the agenda tonight is our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. As always, I open the floor up if no one has signed up to deliver their invocation, and ask anyone in the audience if they would like to deliver an invocation this evening, they may come forward and do so. Seeing as no one is going to jump up, I'll ask my pleasure Chair, Commissioner Jarvis, to handle that for us this evening.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to gather here. We ask that you be present with us tonight. Give us your wisdom, give us your will, and let us take seriously the business that we do here. I ask that you surround us, help us be kind, help us be understanding, and once again, Lord, let us do your will. I also ask that you go with everyone tonight as they go home from this place. Keep them safe in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And before we move into approval of the agenda, I'm going to remind everyone to silence their ringer. Someone has someone at their front door right now. Sounds like there's a ring notification going off from somewhere out there in the audience. So if you would take a second to quiet those down. And next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have some changes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to amend the agenda under closed session to read "Closed Session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matter entitled 85 &amp; Sunny LLC versus Currituck County and EnviroLink versus Currituck County."
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you want to do it now, but I would like to break out under the consent agenda, budget amendments. I'd like to discuss the amendment relative to the mobile wastewater plant, please.
Okay.
That's in there as a budget amendment.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you. Let's see here. Let me add that. And I'll handle that at the time of consent agenda. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Next up, ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder, and I'll kick that over to our county attorney for that, please. Thank you.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interests, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anything on the agenda tonight from the Board? All right, thank you all. Next up is public comment, as always. It is limited to three minutes. The lights will let you know when you're running out of time. When you get to the orange light, you've got one minute left. When you've reached the red light, we'd ask that you please just wrap up your comments. We have quite a few people signed up this evening. See, Mr. Andrew Miles signed up and put down he wants to yield some time to James Mims. That's not kind of how this works. So you get to formulate your thoughts and come up here and talk to us about what you'd like to talk about. James, I'm sure, will be talking to us about the same thing we talked to him about every time. We'll welcome him back up here. As a matter of fact, he is our first person this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to start by asking you respectfully to please allow that time to be yielded to complete the comments that I have, as I will extend past three minutes.
Well, I can cede you a little bit of time if I feel like you're going in a good direction. We want to hear that. How's that sound?
All right.
All right.
You just have to cut me off if I could.
Right. Well, let's try and get through it there.
Okay.
All right.
I promise to remain respectful.
All right.
Good evening, Board. Today is the day. We found out where in the process we lie with getting the text amendment completed regarding the minimum lot size. Word was, planning hadn't received word from this Board. When I inquired about this, I was told a work session had yet to even be held on the topic, and some of you had already said publicly a work session was soon. However, I continue to see new work sessions placed on the agenda each and every meeting. Board, I think it's time to address this publicly, to effectively communicate a timeline besides "soon." I will say, I have recently received a new update as to where we stand. According to Senator Hennig, it has always been within the full control and responsibility of this body. Today, I ask only of you to address our citizens, the ones that have joined us today in the audience, and even those watching from home. It's time to stop the political talk, the deliberation, the procrastination. We've done the work for you. I've got with me today the exact language needed changed within the text amendment, the very text amendment I have prepared to submit to planning tomorrow morning along with the funds that my fellow brothers and sisters of this community provided for me. I ask of you a specific date for a work session to the people of this county in public eye for word that you seek this change for the betterment of your communities and to fulfill our much-needed request. This text amendment has been discussed long enough. I'm tired of the blank check of the people of Currituck going to the infrastructure to support these hundreds of dwellings being placed here. We must call a spade a spade. This has been a terrible mistake. This cannot happen again in Moayak. I hope after what I witnessed of a stressful two days that this committee went through, that each of you see that larger populations does not mean more money to play with. I hope you see what this is doing to our taxes and the impact this has on those with fixed incomes. I will name no one, but some of you have said FOST will do good for our community. Now, many of you are reaching out to say you had no choice. After all, did we really have the infrastructure to support this? We are behind on funds to support apparatus, needed EMS workers, police vehicles, school resource officers, and school expansions, all of which are on mine and your dollar, and now a direct cause of our increase in taxes this very year. I wish not to oust or defame anyone. That's not what I'm here for. I don't wish for any of us to walk away from here angry or defeated. I seek compromise, dialogue, unity, and answers to the people's requests publicly. Board, we want this minimum lot size. We want to preserve our communities and what's left of once rural mainland Currituck County. No, Grandy does not need apartments. No, Moayak does not need apartments. Wetlands are not to be included as open space. No 100 houses on 100 acres with houses that are 30,000 square feet because 50 of those acres are wetlands. Mixed residential needs eliminated completely from the UDO. We will scrutinize and ensure every word cannot be manipulated. There's no room for error with this. We want the lots to be 1-acre minimum lot size, not county streets, sidewalks, drainage, et cetera. One dwelling, one acre. In case you can't tell, this is frustrating, frustrating, and we must take the little guy's opinions as seriously as each of you would take personal and developer opinions. Often hear members of this Board project that nobody shows up for anything. Correct. No one has showed up on record against this 1-acre minimum lot size request. I may be misspoken when this will get done, but now the people watching at home and the Board before me know the seriousness behind their constituents. Rest assured, we did our part. This will be turned in tomorrow, or we will get answers tonight. To ensure not one more development is passed before this text amendment, I do request that this Board place a halt on all project and development requests until this amendment is adopted. It's time to put the public first. I'm genuinely sorry I had to come to this, but this is important and I care. I genuinely care, and I'm going to speak for those that turn out for this moment. We genuinely care. Some of you have been asking for voices on the record. I'm here, and I can't stop this fight. Lastly, each of you, commissioners, committee staff, and those in the audience here today to support me, and you know what? Even those that hate me, the ones that rest easy at night knowing in their heart that they're doing this for the betterment of their community. I hear you. I see you, and I appreciate you. My intent has not been to create hatred or division on social media. The intent through social media has been involvement, education of the public, and healthy conversation. I've told some in private, and I'm going to tell you publicly, if you're an outlier, if you can rest your head in peace, if you're fighting for your constituents, if you're listening, and finally, if you're being honest, you're a public servant, keep doing you. You will win reelection. You will have my vote, and I wish to stand loyal to you in every fight. I don't care the size of the Army. Board, it's time to answer to the public. Don't do it for me, do it for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mims.
Just one comment question. Grandy only has apartments. They've always had apartments. And I know teachers and police officers have stated they're getting started, so Grandy only has apartments. I just wanted to make that correction.
Right. We have them further down the county as well. All right. Next up, Darcy Messina?
Messina.
Messina, sorry. Should have put my glasses on, Darcy. Oh, my apologies.
That's okay. You've got to put mine on.
As a reminder, please give us your name and address when you come up to the podium this evening.
Darcy Messina, 101 White Hair and Drive in Currituck. I made a request of the Board to livestream the budget meeting. I want to thank those that answered the question in a civil manner and prove worthy of the position we elected them for. I would like to state that while I may not be in attendance at every BOC meeting, rest assured, I watch them all on the live streams, and I do vote. I also would like to introduce myself as the person that said Mr. Hennig said that he would try to get the impact fees. I didn't make it up. I didn't lie. What I posted was true. If anyone wants to see the proof, I have it. And I'd also like to share my support for the UDO changes that Mr. Mims is asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's put my glasses on.
Richard Barklo, 107 Chestnut Drive, Moayak. We're talking about taxes going up, okay? There's a lot of people, including myself, that live on a fixed budget, and you cannot take and basically, I mean, I was told, go on down to the county, talk to them, and possibly, when you turn, or when you're 65, I am 65, possibly get a reduction. Well, I guess I shouldn't have worked all my life like I did because I make too much money for a reduction. Right now, get Social Security, plus I work part-time. It's going to be tough with the way inflation's been. Me and my wife have had to cut on a lot of things that we used to do. We used to go out at least once a week, go out to eat. We don't do that anymore. Why? We don't have the money. And then last year, even though everybody says there wasn't an increase in taxes, well, something happened because my price of my house says that it went up. I didn't get any money. All I had to do was dish out the money. If I have to dish out more taxes, that means taxes went up. You say, well, the percentage didn't go up, but your value went up. Well, that doesn't do me any good. I'm not planning on selling unless I have to, and if taxes keep on going up and I have to keep cutting things, I may. And maybe when I do, I'll sell it to a family that's got 15 kids. That way, me and my wife, which we don't have any kids, will scoot on out of the county. Then you've got 15 more kids to worry about in the schools. And the way the building's going, it's just crazy. I mean, there are certain people on this Board that have told me, hey, new houses bring in more taxes. Well, yeah, it brings in more taxes, but if that family's got five kids, them taxes aren't going to pay for their schooling. My taxes are. Well, I have two kids that went through Currituck Schools. One, he's in the Air Force. He's making good. But he says he'll never come back to Currituck County. He says, basically, the way that this county is anymore, he says, I don't even want to come back. Got a daughter that lives over in Camden. She loves it over there in Camden. She says, why do I want to live in Currituck? It seems like every time you turn around, something over there's happening. Says, you're always reading about the schools and everything, and she says, I teach over here, or substitute teach over here in Camden, and I have good, you know, good replies. That's it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Andrew Miles, do you want to come up this evening? Come on. You can do it.
I read that.
No? All right. All right. I wasn't going to put you on the spot, but...
Sounds good.
All right. Come on up, man.
I agree with everything James Mims has said.
All right.
That's all I got to say. Thank y'all.
All right. But where do you live? You go, you've got to come back up now and tell us your address.
How y'all doing? My name is Andrew Miles, and I live at 125 Keratuck Drive in Currituck.
Well, hold on, sir. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, Janet Rose.
Good evening, Ms. Janet. Janet Rose, 212 Pointers Road, Moayak, North Carolina. First, I want to take a minute and thank each of you for serving Currituck County. I know it's a thankless job, but I do appreciate the time, and I know that you are trying to do the best you can for Currituck. With that being said, I'm here tonight to talk to you just for a minute on school safety. You know, I taught in Currituck for a long, long time, and when you all went to school and I went to school, we probably didn't have to worry about being safe. But it's a different time now. And before I retired in 2015, there was talk of doing more, and they did do more. You know, all of our schools are kept locked. We've got some school resource officers at some of our schools, so we're doing more now than I think we ever have to ensure the safety of our students. But I'm asking you, as you consider this budget, to please do a little more. I think the time has come for us to have a school resource officer in every school. I know it's not going to be cheap, but I do think it will be money well spent. So please consider that as you consider your budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. All right. Next up, I have Donna Robertson.
Donna Robertson, 104 Brumsey Landing Drive. I want to second Ms. Rose's comments. I appreciate all y'all being here and doing what you do to serve our community. I know it's, you don't do it for the money. I'm sure it's thankless, and I don't always agree with all y'all, but I appreciate you being here. Growth, whatever you think about it, is coming to Currituck. My main concern is catching up our resources to our growth. One thing I do know for sure is it's better when given a chance to show up and speak your voice, like all these people here tonight, than it is just to complain on Facebook. If you don't like, for example, what is printed in our local circular, Focus on Currituck, pick up the phone and call the gentleman responsible for producing Focus on Currituck. Don't put it on Facebook. Don't complain on Facebook. Don't make it a problem. We all need to be involved in solutions. We need to stop complaining about problems. The more of us that show up, the more of us that stay informed, the more of us that get educated, the better off we are. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Kelsey Roberts.
Good evening. Hi, it's Kelsey Roberts, 107 Arrowhead, Moayak. I am here also to speak about school resource officers. I am a parent of one, soon-to-be two, elementary students in Currituck County, and I am here requesting desperately that we can have school resource officers in every elementary school. From what I've learned over the past couple of weeks, and myself and some others really hit the ground running after Nashville, it continues to happen throughout our country, and it seems to occur more and more in elementary schools. Some things that I read after Nashville was that shooter decided on Covenant School due to the fact that there was not proper security. That makes me feel like I'm dropping my kids off and they're sitting ducks every day, and that does not sit well with me whatsoever. As the youngest being in elementary schools, I think they need and deserve the same protection that our middle and high schools have. I cannot imagine how many schools throughout our nation are now living with regret now after they've had a shooting occur. Uvalde, Covenant, just to consider this past school year. I can't fathom sitting here and just waiting for something to happen, and then all of us deciding to take action to make sure that we have the proper security in every single school throughout our county. I struggle to understand what could be more important as far as budget. I understand that there is only so much money afforded for our county and for these things, but I'm struggling to understand what is more important than every single child that goes to school in Currituck County, whether they're a senior in high school or whether they're in kindergarten. So without due respect, until I'm able to learn what is more important than that, I'm very hopeful and prayerful that we are able to fix the budget to make sure that every single student, including my two, are safe every single day at school. I agree with what Ms. Janet said. It's, the times are different. When I grew up, I didn't have to worry about someone breaking into our school with some type of weapon and killing people, and it's very terrifying having to take my kids to school. I appreciate what our county has already done. I do sometimes see cops there in the mornings and the afternoons, but I certainly think that they should be there all day, just like the middle and high schools. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Next, we have a name we've not seen in a while, Ms. Peggy Lusk.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Lusk, and I live at 140B Street in Moayak. I have been trying to educate myself a little bit more on some of the people and also departments of the county, and I want to say that the Citizens Academy group that I've been a part of has been really helpful in highlighting some of the things that are offered that have been put in place by the commissioners, which is great. The last time that I came to a commissioners' meeting, I spoke about the 1-acre per-home lot size, and Selena at the time addressed me afterwards to say that that was in the works. And I think that that is something that's extremely important to a lot of people, these people that have come tonight or wanting that support, and I've talked to other people out in the community that feel the same way. They're moving down to Currituck County because it's rural. They're trying to get away from the high-density towns of even Chesapeake anymore, but especially Virginia Beach. And so when they're coming down here, I think that it would be in our best interest, as we grow, to afford a larger lot size to the people, and it also will imply that we are a rural community. That's what we're implying through some of the services that we offer and that I have found out about through the Citizens Academy. So that's one of the biggest things that I'd like to address. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is I am the committee chair for the Moayak Stormwater, and I see that it's still listed on the website, and I'd like to know when that that might be resumed for our meetings. We felt instrumental in bringing some information from the public because we have such an issue with flooding in Moayak. And so as being a part of this committee, and we've had the people that are shown on the website, some of them still want to serve, but there are other people who are interested in serving. And here again, this goes to some of the new residents that want to be a part of it because, A, they've experienced personally the flooding, and they also know how it can impact all of the neighborhoods that we have. So I'd like some follow-up with that on when our committee might resume our meetings. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Before you go off, we actually have been talking about that. We have a meeting this evening, kind of following our, a little out of sequence. We're doing a work session with the stormwater folks after this, or stormwater, and it's about that very thing. So you should be hearing from us shortly. We kind of have a war chest now to actually be able to fund doing some stuff, along with Army Corps of Engineer study, which you're probably familiar with, that really pointed out the problem areas. So we'll be moving forward, jumping back into the Moayak Stormwater.
Yeah, there were monies left in that pot, I guess you might say.
Yep.
And so I'd like to know where we stand on that because we were really trying to come up with a solution for a systematic maintenance of some of the main ditches in the Moayak area. But now, it's not just the Moayak area. It has definitely gone down.
Yeah, we recognize that, and part of the problem was we had these little pocket districts, and really, it's a much larger picture, right? And so that's why we created a much larger stormwater district, but the districts that paid in have their own pots of money available to them, and we're going to hopefully be able to augment that with a much larger pot of money now to affect some positive outcomes.
That sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you much. Have a good evening. All right. Next up, Joe Hobbs.
Good evening. Good to see all y'all. And again, like everybody else is saying, thank y'all for your service to this great county of Currituck.
Joe, I need your name and address before you jump into it.
Okay, let me give you my name. Joseph F. Hobbs, retired, 278 Northwest Backwoods Road in Moayak, North Carolina, 27958.
Thank you, sir.
Again, good evening to all y'all, and thank you so much for what you do. My subject tonight, I'll try to be as quick as I can, is concerning ISO rating in our community of, I live in the northwest part of the county, which is like Gibbs Woods. Nobody really knows where it is. Nobody really ever goes there, but it's there, and I'm trying to support our community. And the thing that I'm trying to let y'all know about, and you probably already know about, is that we pay high insurance premiums due to the lack of our distance from the Moayak Fire Department. We pay anywhere from almost like living on the water type premiums for insurance. And I'm just trying to address this to y'all and let y'all understand where my concerns, which should have been addressed a long, long time ago, but my subject is what can be done to improve the ISO rating in areas of the county along South Mills Road and Northwest Backwoods Road in Moayak. Some of us don't know what an ISO rating is, and I just learned about it. An ISO rating is an evaluation of how well the fire department can protect your community and home from fire and other disasters. This is regulated by the State Insurance Services Office in Raleigh, and it has a rating system, scale of 1 to 10. 1 is the best. That means you get good rates for your homeowner's insurance, and 10 is the worst, which you get terrible insurance ratings. Unfortunately, the area in which I live, we are rated as a Unfortunately, the area in which I live, we are rated as a 10, which is not good. The area of Moayak along Northwest Backwoods Road and parts of South Mills Road have an ISO rating of 10, which is the worst resulting in homeowners having to pay anywhere from 30% plus the average from other people living in the Moayak area. Insurance premiums is what I'm talking about. And possible cancellation of homeowner's insurance, not being able to get homeowner's insurance because of our rating, because of the fire rating. My wife and her family have lived in this area of the county for several generations, and have been paying high homeowner insurance rates. New citizens who have built new dwellings in this area of rapid growth and development, as we've been talking about, have been surprised in some cases at the cost of homeowner insurance premiums. And sometimes being surprised because their insurance has been, has been threatened to be canceled. Some of the reasons why the area in which I live has horrible fire ratings, and one of the reasons is because a lot of the housing is further than six miles from the Moayak Fire Department, which normally services our area. And they do a great job, I commend them, but they can't control these rates, as y'all know. And also hear that y'all are looking for a new fire department in Moayak. What I'm asking tonight is to see if you can't address our area within the new fire department so that our rates can go down, just as you've done in the past in some other areas of the county. For example, in Currituck, that small substation in Currituck was set up for reduced homeowner insurance. There's also another station over in Maple that was set up for that same purpose. I'm asking if y'all could somehow address that situation. Also, the other issue is where we live, there is no public water supply available. For whatever reason, years ago, when the county set up that water system for the whole county, part of South Mills Road and, and the whole Northwest Backwoods Road where I live has no public water. The question I have to you as commissioners tonight, why was the Currituck County public water lines not planned and made available to the citizens in this community, which in recent years has grown rapidly with new approved subdivisions and housing? Why wasn't it extended into our area? Another question that I want to address to you as commissioners, is it the responsibility of local government to provide and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of our citizens? And landowners of Currituck County in this area and other areas of the county? And I know that question is yes. Currituck County, I don't have to tell y'all, y'all know is the wealthiest county in northeastern North Carolina. One of the top 10 fastest-growing areas in the North Carolina. I would, I'd bet on it's probably one of the top 50 growingest areas in the United States. But I'm here to address this homeowner's insurance situation where these people, along with myself, are paying outrageous rates. And I'm just asking if y'all can help us as the board to bring the cost down so that people can live. We thank you for the low taxes, but I'm asking to help with these insurance companies, and I think you can. In conclusion, I'm not an expert, but I feel like to improve the ISO ratings in the area in which I live, there's two things that need to be done. One is the need to finish and complete that public water system water line along the whole length of South Mills Road and Northwest Backwoods Road. We should be provided the same benefits as most of the other parts of the county as far as public water and the accessibility of water to help fight fires and to help our fire department. Yes, I know this will cost a lot of money. But yes, as we know, we could use funds from this recent past Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act Fund that I know Currituck's gonna get a little bit of the pie from the federal government. You could use some of that money to help with this infrastructure. It should have been completed when the whole water system was completed in Currituck.
Joe, I'm gonna have to cut you off, but I think Commissioner Beaumont might have some comments about ISO ratings and, well, maybe payment as well. They both are heavily into fire and EMS.
Okay, so a word on ISO rating. And, and the county made, back in the day, first of all, the county owns Knott's Island Station and Water Lily, correct? Those are the only two stations the county owns. The volunteer fire departments stand up and buy land and arrange to have buildings built and apparatus then migrate into. The county doesn't actively run fire service in Currituck County because, you know, we've heard some folks talk about taxes and how they're getting up there and all that kind of stuff. You want to talk about a real tax increase? Stand up Currituck County with all new, with facilities in, in areas that are kind of remote. Part of what's feeding, you're right, the six miles adversely affects your ISO rating. To get public water to where you're at is running how much a mile?
I don't know right offhand, but I do know we're getting ready to do a project from extending up into Moayak, and I think it's six million is what's been estimated.
For how many miles?
From about Fort Sligo to Moayak, I believe.
Okay, so.
I anticipate it's gonna be much more expensive when the bids come.
And the way that works, the way Currituck County, our philosophy has always been, is the users pay, right? So I live in Shawboro, there's city water somewhere around, but it's not by me. I don't have city water, I knew that when I bought, right? I have a well. I'm not asking the county to run water to me. I think when you start talking about where water went, a lot of, a lot of it went to where there was going to be enough people to be able to pay for it so that it would not be an exorbitant amount of money and cost that comes out. That's your South Mills. I think what, one of the things that we've done is that folks that come in and ask for a subdivision, if you will, part of what they pay for is to run, or have paid for in the past, is to run the infrastructure to their subdivision to put it up. All those subdivisions, Phosflora, Waterly, et cetera, et cetera, they all paid to tap into the Currituck County water system, which is why their ISO ratings are, are lower, right? It, it, so be careful what you ask for because you want to live rurally, right? You also want county water, you don't want to pay a lot for that service or your taxes to go up. That invites neighborhoods because now they've got the service that can feed them.
Well, can, can I ask you this? Have you been in that area lately?
Gibbs?
No, where I live.
Yes, sir.
Have you seen what the growth there? Have you seen the subdivisions there?
It's, they're not high-density, though.
Yes, they are, yes, they are, a lot of them. And there's already some that are approved that have not even developed yet.
It's not a full service.
Yeah, you, 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 I don't know if you, when's the last time you've been there?
Kevin, do we have full service in Gibbs Woods?
Well, not Gibbs Woods, he just mentioned Gibbs Woods, but.
Northwest, you need, you need to take a trip up there and see what's there, is what you need to do, and you'll see where I'm coming from.
There is, there is more houses, there's been probably, what, 40 homes, Joe, on Backwoods Road in the last decade, 10 years?
My point is, if the county would have done what they should have done 20 years ago, we wouldn't be in the mess we're in now with this.
We could not have afforded it back when.
You would have, you would have had, so to Paul's point, when you extend services, what comes with that is full service.
Correct.
And when you do full service, now you've got density. So now you can have one-third acre lots and all those things happening to help pay for that system. If we were to put it in and charge you and the other users at the end of the line, it'd be way more than your ISO rating, it's, it, it just would be super exorbitant to do that. So there's a, there's a fine line.
Yeah, well, you see, well, you just see, you see my point.
Yeah, absolutely, we do, we absolutely do.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but, yes, sir.
The reason it stopped on South Mills Road where it did, the Farmers Home Administration grant ran out, and the county didn't have the funds to carry it any further. That's why it stopped where it did.
So, so one of the things.
Stopped in grandy for the same reason.
Yeah.
So one of the things the county has done in many areas, and it's, and we call it a water shuttle, right? And that's, we have sources of water, and there's organizations, there's memorandums of understanding and of operation with Crawford, Lower Currituck, Moayak, and, I mean, even Corolla will roll fire tankers to ferry water to try, you know, to support that, that element. So ISO can be addressed by that, it can be addressed by apparatus, which probably the most fundamental change that the county went through several years ago was stop using apparatus to try and chase ISO ratings. And we focused internally in the county on training, which can get bigger bang for the buck. It's not gonna help from distance from a fire station, that's, that is what it is. Now, in Crawford, with a certified water shuttle, we have the, we basically have overcome the ISO rating of public water throughout Crawford Township. So there are ways to get around it, but if it's really, if it's really sparse and it's really far to get to a water source, that's gonna be hard to overcome.
Just, just like mutual aid, far as like if a fire breaks out or something tragic, tragic on Northwest Backwoods Road, and you know.
We, we've had some very, some fires, I've witnessed in my neighborhood to the north and neighbors to the south. And fortunately, we have Northwest Naval Base who, with, in coordination with Moayak Fire Department, coordinate together. And guess who gets there usually first?
Northwest.
Northwest, almost every time.
They're fully staffed.
Thank you, thank you for Moayak Fire Department, but thank you for the naval base too. If we didn't have that, I believe, believe that neighborhood would burn down. I believe, it's, I'm just, the way it is, so.
Well, that's a staff versus volunteer system, so.
But, and I'll hold you any longer, they need to build another substation fire department somewhere close by. And number two, we need public water.
Very good. Thanks for coming out tonight, Joe, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, is it Keith Neer?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Keith Neer, 343 Northwest Backwoods Road, Moayak, North Carolina, 27958. I'm here just to back up Joe, give you some numbers. Two years ago, my insurance rate was $1,700. It's now over $2,900 in just two years, and that's not counting this year's increase already. That's, and they keep blaming, well, you're five miles from the fire, probably five miles. Joe has asked the fire department to use Northwest as a fire station would bring us under the five-mile limit. We was told no. So that's not a good help at all. And I didn't say about running water lines, but is there any way you can run a line just for like fire hydrants? Because they said, do you have a fire hydrant somewhere? No. That, that, that would bring down our rates a little bit, that would help. But $2,900 a year, I might as well skate in Virginia 16 years ago. I'm paying $460 a month escrow between taxes and insurance, and it's getting worse every year.
But it's going up for everybody on the insurance side, mine's gone up too. And I live around the corner from the fire department, so it's, it's not.
Well, I only have a 1,600 square foot home.
Right.
And I'm paying $2,900.
Right, I know, it's, it's terrible.
That's getting a little out of hand, and I'm not the only person.
I, I, I'm not.
I mean, I ain't saying there's a lot of people back there, but there's ways to help us, and we've been denied, like, using Northwest as a main fire department in, in Moayak.
I think that, that's not, that's not our call, that's.
The fire, well, the fire chief, well, I think Joe said he talked to fire chief and said no. So I don't know about that, I'm just.
Yeah, I, we can't, it's not, they're not ours, it's in another state.
And it's government.
Yeah, it's not ours, they just show up and help out.
All you do is gotta petition, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm saying there's other ways, there's other things that can be done to help do something, I mean, that's.
The one question I would have, and I don't know if it would help it or not, would be if there's a legitimate certified fire pond that's in their region that can be used, you know, maybe the community could pull together and build one or something to that effect, but that, your problem is source of water.
And I've been canceled three times in the last about 10 years. I've lost homeowner insurance, I, I got notice saying we're not renewing your, I even had Lloyd's of London for three or four years, and they finally said, we're done. So, I mean, I'm losing insurance companies because of where I'm at. They say, we're not insuring you anymore. Pretty soon, I ain't gonna have anybody, or I'm gonna pay such a novice grade, it's just gonna kill me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Melvin Evans?
Good evening, sir. Hello, good evening, my name is Melvin Evans, 185 Northwest Backwoods Road. And I came to talk about the insurance problem. You've already sort of addressed everything, a lot of my questions. I want to stop and say thank you for your service. I know what y'all do is a hard job, and it's not appreciated by everybody. But I do appreciate you, thank you. I've lived there all my life, 74 years on this farm, and we've had two fires on our farm. One, a chicken house burned down, and another was a brush fire. And each time, the Northwest Naval Station were the first people there, and ones that came. And of course, Moayak gets there, but I was, years ago, I was a volunteer at Moayak Fire Department. But, and the only reason I was, I was farming, and they needed somebody that was there instead of working in Norfolk. And, but I don't know exactly what the answer is. I don't know, I know Crown Point has a pond there that they can draw water in. I don't know if digging a pond or something, a holding pond would be an answer to help, or if that would even affect the rates, you know, I'm just, I'm lost for an answer.
Mr. Chair, is there any way we might, I mean, have the county manager, some, maybe just reach out to Northwest River Base and just see if there, if it isn't no, why they're saying no, or if they would be willing to maybe, maybe get a firm answer one way or the other, why, why not?
Certainly doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, just, we can find out, at least we can do that.
Great, all right, and also.
Does your, okay, so does your insurance company ask you to identify where the firehouse is?
They do it automatically, I don't have to tell them. They, they identify Moayak as our, and I'm over six miles from Moayak Fire Department.
And it, when you say that, that's not the closest department Northwest is?
Northwest is, it's probably.
No, but I mean, have you tried saying Northwest is the one that would respond?
My insurance, well, he's not my insurance man anymore because they, the company was balled out, and the new company wouldn't insure my garage. And so I had to go back to the Farm Bureau, even though it's pretty high. But he said if there was some way you could get an agreement with Northwest that our rates could come down. And, but I don't know if that's possible, they're in another state, they're federal, I don't know, but.
So you have to provide proof.
You would have to have an agreement or something to.
Well, we, I mean, there is a mutual, mutual aid agreement in place with, with Moayak right now.
I don't see why they couldn't use that.
And I, and I bet you the chief could get you a copy of that.
I don't know, that might work.
Wouldn't you think, Mike? It's public, it's not, it's not private or sensitive, I mean, it's public information. He's got a mutual aid agreement, I guarantee it.
I'm pretty sure that when there's a structural fire, it's automatic page.
It is. It is. It's paged. So it, the document may be, may exist. How about this? If you all that have that concern specifically with the ISO, if you'll give our county, county attorney, county manager, who's gonna pony up? Ike?
No, I'll be glad to gather information and find out.
Check with Bobby and see, because if they, that's not Bobby. George. Then, then they can get a copy and then presi, present it and then you're good to go. Right? Because that, that document already exists and it is an agreement in place.
Fire station will respond with the, I don't know where he is now.
And like he said, like Joe said earlier too, I'm not knocking Moayak, because those guys do an awesome job, but Northwest always wins getting there.
Yep. Well, they're, they're going to, they're going to their staff.
Last house fire just down the road, right, what Joe was talking about, there was four different fire stations there, Moayak-
Chesapeake.
Chesapeake, Northwest, and right there at Slough, Crawford, yes. So they all get there and, and do the best-
But if you all could get your names to Ike, that way he knows who to, and a contact, then, yep. Thank you, sir.
All right. And also, Mr. Memes' request about the one acre lot size, I believe we do need a lot size, a minimum lot size in Currituck. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you coming out this evening. All right, I don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anyone who would like to speak that did not sign up this evening? Yes, sir. All right, well, you gotta come on up to the lectern and give us your name and address, sir.
Name's Jimmy Memes, one oh six Chestnut Drive, Buckskin Creek. Now, first off is I came here in seventy-three. This year, June, will be the fiftieth year I've been in this county. And when I came in, I, me and the wife was looking at the lot and all that. And I was approached, said, come sign, come join the fire department. We're reorganizing it, starting it. Now, the reason we don't have firehouse in Backwoods Road is then folks won't do, won't do it. We started one up there a couple of times in conjunction with Moayak, Crawford has, people have. And Mr. Etheridge, he can, he was, he can tell you if you're a foreigner and don't know what happened. But those people out there, down at Balahack and, and roads there, they were not doing, they would not apply, give the thirty-five dollars for it to, to get water to their homes. So the FHA or whoever wouldn't own us the money enough to do it. Cross that ri, bridge right down here, it, going jock, same thing. I worked for Rawlin Corner. I had people come to me. They'd just walk in the place and come back there where I worked and, and cuss me out because I was spitting the water. Nobody south of that bridge bought into the water system. That's why they get, didn't get water to start with. Same thing up here. These people refuse, would not do it. They gotta understand, every one of the fire departments that was here, when I came here, our Crawford Rescue Squad and all, we did what had to be done, selling chicken dinners and, and fish plates. Now, the county didn't do it because the county didn't have the money. I've said enough, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
After the ISO, they get some firemen second class in their neighborhood, that rate will go, go down.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else this evening? All right, seeing no one, I will close public comment and move into Commissioner's report. Do we want to jump into that or take a five-minute break and then get into Commissioner's report? I think it's gonna be lengthy.
Let's just roll it. Let's just roll it.
Roll with it. Everybody good? All right. Well, starting to my right then, I'll go over to Commissioner Owen Etheridge, who has been here through everything and can comment on all.
I don't know about that, Mr. Chairman, but thank you anyway. Real short, folks, we got farm equipment moving up and down the highway because it's planting season. In the last three or four days, I've seen people almost take the front end of a tractor off trying to pass. If you're running that late, leave home ten minutes earlier so that everybody stays safe. Last week was Telecommunicators Week in this, in the country. And I know our Currituck nine-one-one center celebrated it. And they need to be thanked every day because I think we have the best nine-one-one center in the state. And of course, I am a little bit biased since my wife works there. But I just tell it like it is on that. And lastly, support the Flower and Garden Show coming up this weekend on Saturday at the Cooperative Extension Center. Go out and buy yourself some plants, Selena, so you can do something with that mulch that you talked about putting down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McCord?
Yeah, I was hoping I was gonna get to go before Owen where I could throw out the thank you to our dispatchers. We do have an amazing, I work with them daily, our dispatchers. The love that they were shown, the signs that they were, the different departments of the county put in there, they, we really have some, they're, they are truly first responders. The first person you deal with of any kind of crisis that somebody has when you call, and, and they are really good at their job. They've delivered babies, they've saved people's lives over the phone of coaching people what to do. And like I said, you can't thank them enough. So kudos to them. And I wish I would have went first where I could have got ahead of Owen. But we do live in an amazing county. We have amazing services for the price we pay for. I do want to say something, and this is not like in any attack or anything towards any other county, but I would like to say for what we pay here compared to a Camden to a Pasqua tank, Camden gets two-thirds of their services from another county. And our tax rate's almost half of theirs. So I just want to throw that out there. I love where we live. That's why I work here. That's why I spend, try to spend every dollar that I make or whatever here in the county, because it's a great county. Events, the Master Gardener Show this Saturday, there's like fifty things, I think, going on. The Mud Bog, the first Mud Bog of the year at Dennis Anderson's Muddy Motorsports. I'll be there Saturday for that. The, we have a car show this weekend. We have all kinds of stuff. So there's stuff going on. And the roads are busy. People are going to the beach. I think the bridge might be falling apart or something, because that's, they're trying to get there as fast as they possibly can. Guaranteed, if they're speeding in Currituck County, they'll get tickets. I guarantee that. So slow down, people, leave earlier, because people, it's crazy, the stuff that you see out there on the roads, like you said about the farm equipment. I saw a piece of farm equipment over the weekend, was on Tolles Creek Road. The guy's out there trying to put food on his family's table and other people's family, and just people drive like idiots. So learn how to drive, do what you're supposed to do, or you're gonna suffer the consequences. Far as the schools thing, like you said, and, and, and we are very fortunate for the services that we receive. One thing you could say, and I don't know if the SROs is the answer to the schools, but if, and I pray to God that never happens at one of our elementary schools. But if something was to happen at one of our elementary schools, it's zero response time if an SRO is there. Zero. So like, you can't count one Mississippi, there's already somebody there. And how our current SROs work, the middle schools nap, the high school. If an SRO is there, when the school starts, they're there when it opens. And when it's over, they're still there. They have to go to an attorney's office and sign papers or their kid has a doctor's appointment. A deputy relieves them. Somebody is there from start to finish. So our guys at the sheriff's office do an excellent job checking the schools in the morning, walking the schools. The sheriff said the other day, we had a meeting, like, you know, he goes to schools. We typically go, even the admin guys like myself, we go once a day to a school, walk a school. And like, Central's right by our office. We're, we'll go there and they're like, hey, somebody just left. And we still walk. So like I said, it's, it's good to have them. And who would have ever thought in any right person, well, they're not right in their mind, that would harm an innocent child, is a sick individual and pretty much deserves to rot somewhere. I'll just say that. But like I said, I don't, that was not the, the case ten years ago, twenty years ago. But it's, it's a sad world sometimes that we live in, and there's a lot of mental health issues where somebody would want to hurt a, a child. I mean, who, you know. But like I said, be safe out there. There's lots of events in the county this weekend and coming up. And it's busy. Leave earlier. Thanks to our county staff. We had our budget meetings. I think I have seventeen meetings in the month of April. So I'm really getting rich being a commissioner. But, no, just kidding. But like I said, I, we don't, definitely don't do it for the money, because, and the headache. So, but, like I said, thank you for the, the people that came tonight and spoke about Backwoods and the different things. Because like I said, I do ride back there and I, I know, and all the different stuff in the county that we, that we have. And thank you to our fire departments. Those guys do an awesome job. Crawford, Lower Currituck, Corolla, our paid fire, Moayak, I don't want to forget somebody, Knott's Island. And like I said, those guys, they do a great job, as well as your, your deputies and your troopers. Roy Cooper, I'm gonna put you on notice, get us some troopers in the county. We're supposed to have seven. We have four, so your deputies, we do their jobs on a constant basis. So Roy, fund some troopers, get them over here in the county. If he's watching, it's probably not, but I really don't care if he is or not. So, all right. Thank you all for- That's it for me.
Kevin, always colorful. Thank you, Mr. Bama.
And I'm following that.
Right, sorry.
So, so some of the comments, and I'm gonna kind of piggyback a little bit on the SRO thing. So, the last school Shawboro was built-
Oh, wait.
A couple of years ago, right? So, so the growth that the county's experienced is not why we're going down the SRO trail, or why we need as many SROs as we need, because that's just a function of school quantity. Now, with Tolles Creek Elementary, that will add another school. The, the second aspect of that is, anyone that doesn't think we have sheriff's deputies in every school in this county, let me assure you, we have, we have law enforcement presence in every school in Currituck County. Some of them are in marked cars, some of are in unmarked cars, some of them are in uniform, some may not be in uniform. The point is, anyone that thinks that our schools are wide open, that, that, I want to assure you that that's not the case. We did fund the acres-
The Genalocks.
The Genalocks. So we do have the physical security that helps keep kids in the classroom safe. And we are working diligently with the, with the sheriff's department to look at what else that we can do. SROs may be a problem, or, I'm sorry, may be a solution to the problem. There's also some other things that the sheriff, we're gonna be discussing as well. Second thing that was, do you wanna, oh, the second thing that was kind of raised as a function of growth, and that was apparatus, that's not why we need to replace apparatus. Our apparatus is ancient, right? And when the, when that equipment gets to be twenty, twenty-five plus years old, it's not as safe as it could be. There's, there's comfort, there's aspects of functionality that some of the older apparatus we don't have. Those pumps start breaking down, they become a maintenance nightmare, they become unreliable. And going back to touching on the ISO rating, the other thing that will impact your ISO rating is apparatus that doesn't work. So we've held off, we've, we have had a very modest, I think three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year was the most recent budget towards purchase of new apparatus. Your vanilla fire engine today is seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and it's gonna take two years to get it delivered if we ordered it today. So we're playing catch-up. We've got a lot of apparatus that, that just needs to be replaced. Had the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to attend Whalehead Owners Property Association, Homeowners Association, whatever, Whalehead Club. So was there, not last Saturday, but the Saturday before. To, to biggest, Commissioner McCord had the joy of being there with me as well. So we provided mutual aid to each other. The biggest issue that the Outer Banks is looking at is gonna be Teen Week. And, you know, for those that don't live in Currituck County, that plan to come visit us during Teen Week, good luck. So we've got radically increased levels of, of law enforcement, alcohol enforcement, neighborhood patrols. I mean, it's gonna get real this summer, because the antics that went on last year, I don't think we're interested in that continuing. That's number one. And number two, our golf carts. Well, not only out of control, but just probably a third of all the questions had to do with golf carts. So, and low-speed ground vehicles, or low-speed, right?
Low-speed vehicles.
Low-speed vehicles. If you don't know if you own a golf cart or a low-speed vehicle, please contact DMV, because they'll be able to let you know which category you, you drive in. You have to have a license to drive either of them on county roads. So the ten-year-old zipping up the street, that's, that's illegal and dangerous, not to mention a threat. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Payman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, a lot of stuff was covered already, but I'm just gonna reiterate, you know, the fire departments, when I was rather actively involved than I am now, we did rigorous trainings, we did the water shuttling, we talked about how we could try to get that ISO rating down. What we could do is a fire department teaming. We've also helped other fire departments get the ratings. So it's, you know, it, it's a hard effort out there. They're constantly training. And I've told everyone before, they need support, you know. They're constantly getting volunteers that start, so they'll spend maybe a month or two, and then they decide they don't want to do it, so they quit. They're constantly getting new people and going through the training. So there's people out there I see that have, you know, elderly individuals that are out there just helping with the traffic, holding signs up, slowing, just slow down. So there's a lot of stuff you could do with the fire departments. As times are changing, people are working. Years ago, had a gentleman come up here, Mr. Mills, anyways, he was, you know, back in the day, you had a lot of farmers out there. They would jump off their tractor and when they got the call, they'd go fire to fire. We don't have that now. Most of our people walk, work outside the area. It's not like it used to be, so it's harder to get committed volunteers out there. So the more, the better. It is a true volunteer. That's what we want to keep that way. We're, we're supporting, we're trying to get the apparatus up to date. And we're getting better equipment for them, faster equipment that can help them save lives faster, updating all that. It takes time, it takes money, but the fire departments are appreciative of what we're trying to do for them. They know that, and they could really use your support. I, I preach that every time I'm up here, and I won't stop. They, all of our first responders, even our police, sheriff's department and our dispatchers, you know, just thank them when you see them out there. They do a thankless job. That's really all I have for this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny Etheridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank all the people for coming out tonight. You can't complain unless you come out and let your voices be heard. So we do appreciate you coming out. Before our meeting tonight, we attended a work session at the Cooperative Extension where they did their report to the people. They gave a program where they told us about how the Cooperative Extension helps the people here in Currituck County. And it was very informative and well-done, and we do appreciate it. And I know that we've mentioned several times about Saturday, they're gonna have the Home Flower and Garden Show. But they're also having a hazardous waste collection where you can take your hazardous waste. They're having document shredding. They're taking up prescription medicines that you're not using anymore. So go online and look at this. It'll be all day Saturday, different things going on. And get out there and take advantage of some of these free things we have for citizens here in the county. And one last thing, I do appreciate the one acre lots. I think most people know where I stand on that. And I hope that's something that will get done very quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rabies Clinic, too, Saturday there as well.
Thank you.
Rabies is from eight to ten.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Jobs?
Thank you. Also, I would like to thank the Cooperative Extension for the show and for the food and for just the information. It's incredible what they do, and I appreciate that, and all that those people do on the front lines every day as a face of Currituck County. Some good news and some more citizen input. I do thank everyone who came out tonight. There is an opportunity for Lower Currituck to voice, hopefully their support, for the revisioning of the Edgewater Road and Highway one fifty-eight intersection. We, as a community, have been clamoring for this for years. It's only gotten worse with the opening of the distillery in the Dollar General. It is taking your life in your own hands literally every time you leave your house. So in- your own hands, literally, every time you leave your house. So, NC DOT has found stip funds, and they have really gotten the ball rolling. There is a public comment meeting, a public meeting, a community meeting, uh, on Thursday, April twentieth, from five to seven, at Powell's Point Baptist Church. It is my hope that you go and you look at the plans there and give your two thumbs up way up to that reimagining and the restricted-access median that will be constructed there. And then finally, I would also like to thank staff for the budget sessions that we attended this week. Um, their efforts help us not only make better decisions, but more informed decisions, and I know lots of time, energy, and effort went in that. Um, this year, we are faced with a daunting task, weighing how much to increase our tax rate. Uh, there are many reasons that this decision is in front of us at this time. One, inflation in every part of the country and every aspect of your life. Two, the hesitancy, uh, to raise taxes in the past, to pay for general maintenance and keeping our infrastructure where it is, uh, and to keep up with growth. That hasn't happened. And of course, the big elephant in the room is the population explosion, uh, that has been fueled by the rampant growth in the northern end of the county. Uh, the tax increase issue is in front of us now, and it's staring us straight in the face. Uh, hard decisions are gonna have to be made. Uh, that includes what we fund, how we fund those items, how much we fund those items, and finally, how we manage that ever-growing list of needs for a county with our growth. We must use this year as a learning tool to help us to learn to say no. No to rezoning our farmland to more subdivisions, no to urban-level densities that we cannot support, and no to stressing our current public facilities any further until we catch up. Many of our citizens are retirees. We heard from a couple of them tonight. I've heard from two today. They're on fixed incomes, and they're stressed, and they're worried. We also have families that are trying to make ends meet with the increase in groceries, and they don't see their monthly income increase. We have got to do better to strategize and to prevent these double-digit increases in the future. And one-acre lots are a good start on that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, um, thank you, guys, for showing up this evening. Uh, may have engaged you and got your ire up, and if that's what it took to get you out here, I am glad that you showed up. This is what it takes to make change. We need to see you and hear from you, not just on social media. So, thank you for showing up tonight. You know, when I started out here as a commissioner, uh, almost seven years ago, um, there were people in the audience like this regularly. And since COVID, uh, that certainly went away. And, um, it is, it is, uh, it is refreshing to see you here again, and hopefully, we'll continue, uh, down that path. I'm gonna have to read from my phone this evening. I apologize. I usually have my computer up and running. It's having issues. So, we did have a, um, a, a work session, as everyone knows, this past Thursday and Friday. We met here in this room, and where you guys are sitting, it was completely transformed into tables, chairs, cables everywhere. Uh, there are no cameras and no mics over there, and that is part of the reason that we don't televise those things. Uh, the other part of it is we, that we just, it's there for us to work, to work through things, to have debate with each other. Sometimes it's vigorous, sometimes we can get our, uh, ire up with each other, rank her up, and, and, um, and possibly getting to a shouting match. And I'm sure the social media would love to see that. Uh, but it, it doesn't do any good, because it doesn't instill faith and confidence. But what it does do is it allows us to have open and honest debate and discussion. We had several people show up. James Menz, who's started to be a fixture here, came out after working his night job and, and hung out. Thank you for coming out. I know, I know you were tired and were part of it, and, and you saw some of that, um, the, the stuff that's facing us. Selena hit on it. There, there are many daunting things facing us with respect to where our tax rate is. Um, you know, we as commissioners always have to take time away from our, our lives, our work, our jobs, our families, to do this. We do it during the day because our staff is here. If they're here in the evenings, we have to pay them overtime. You're certainly not gonna get the best out of me or anyone else that has worked a regular job, um, that day, and then is here late into the evening hours to, uh, discuss these things. And our staff is tired as well. So, there's a reason that we do these things during the day. It may not be the most opportune time, but it is when it should happen. Uh, Commissioner Beaumont had to take time off from work, probably a day and a half or two days. Kevin was off from work. I was out of my office. Mike was not out in the field. Um, you know, all of us lost money, basically, to be here to do that. So, please be aware that we, we know that it is not the most opportune time for the public to be here, but it is the best time for it to take place. Um, I forget which commissioner it was, asked a great question, uh, of, of our finance office, and it's what is the inflationary difference in our tax rate? What, what, what has inflation done to us? How much has it caused us? And it's a little over four cent of tax, just to break even to where we were before the world went nuts. And the US government dumped trillions of dollars on our economy. Thank you for that. And the Federal Reserve dragged their feet to do anything, uh, to help slow down our economy. Um, we've heard tonight that the schools would like us to fund for seven new resource officers. It would actually be six now, as we have not built a seventh school. The estimated cost to do that is over a million dollars, just for the personnel to do that. That's the estimate. It's always gonna be higher. We have to buy six new cars, six new sets of gear, everything that they need to do that. So, it's gonna be much more than one million dollars. Currently, our tax rate, one penny of tax generates a little over eight hundred thousand dollars in taxes. So, that, that one million dollars is over a penny tax increase just to handle that. That is not counting what we have to do to staff those individuals, the overtime that comes into play. As Kevin said, every time a, a school resource officer leaves those buildings, a deputy comes in to fill them, fill in that spot that takes a deputy off the road to do, that was doing something else. Um, or if they take a vacation day, a deputy may have to come in and fill in for that. They're now possibly on overtime themselves. So, there is a tax implication for it, and I say this, uh, because it, it's a lot of money. And it's on top of everything that we're, we're currently talking about. Um, the school currently receives one point four million annually to fund repairs. Their buildings are old. The county has to pay for those repairs and maintenance on their buildings. They have now gone through and really done a great job, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, at whittling down to needs that are necessary, new roofs, new air conditioners, things, uh, settling in schools, things of that nature. Over the next five years, they need to increase a three point six million annually, or over five million dollars, and a combined from what they're currently getting to another three point six million, to affect those changes. That puts what we contribute to the schools at thirty-one point three cents, thirty-one, excuse me, thirty-one cent, a little over thirty-one cent of your taxes going to the schools. Our current tax rate is forty-six cent per hundred evaluation. So, it is a huge number. We cannot do that just out of hand. Yes, this county is very fortunate that we don't have a lot of debt. We don't have a lot of, we pay cash as we go. We have very little debt, and so, we've been able to keep your taxes low. But this is just dealing with the buildings that are here today. It has nothing to do with growth, and everything to do with the age of our buildings that are here, and that they just need work. It is what it is. There's nothing we can do for that. Um, as I've talked about before, and you probably saw the article this weekend, if, if you got in the newspaper, I'm sure it's been passed around, talking about what a new school costs. Twenty-year debt service at our current interest rates is just shy of seven cent of tax, just to pay for that debt. These are all things that we have to work through and deal with. When I came on this board, Dianne Scanlon, our former county manager, had said that we were gonna need to be talking about a school within seven to ten years. Here we are. It happened a little bit faster because our, our growth rate exploded. When he said that, we were not experiencing that growth rate. The economy was still sluggish. We were still on the rebound out of the recession, and then it roared in like a lion. So, it, it sped the, truncated time cable and sped everything up. Um, we have other, other problems in the counties. I've stated before, the technology in this room is antiquated, and it's being held together with basically duct tape and whatever else they can find to make it work on a daily basis. Anyone that watches it at home, Robert, I know you do, um, we, we frequently have problems. So, we need to tear this room apart. The staff's kind of scared of what is underneath this thing. It's been here a long time. So, it's
Windows.
Windows, windows are rotting. We have, we have, we have a lot going on. I've, I've brought that up before, but, you know, we're working through that and being as diligent as we can with your tax dollars and, and making them go as far as we possibly can. We want a very small county, very lean county, and do the best we can. And, you know, James, to your point about taking a while to get from place to place or get things moving through the system, um, a language change can take four to five months. And that's because it has to be vetted by our staff. It has to go to, to the planning staff, and then it has to go to the planning board, and, and then it has to come to us. All of those things are on a time schedule to move through with everything else. That's a good thing. You want us to take time and be deliberate in what we do and the actions that we have. It may seem simple to just go one-acre lot sizes. That part probably is fairly simple. Um, but getting into other zones, there's housing in GB. I don't think there should be. I'd like to see that come out. That allows for density. There's Currituck Station. We approved that. That was started by our previous Board of Commissioners. All of us, to a man, have decided that we no longer want to see that. So, we're gonna repeal the zoning that created Currituck Station, and that is working its way through. Um, last week, uh, last week, Thursday or Friday, I signed the paperwork for Mr. Kemp to begin with planning staff to actually draft the language to go up to one-acre lot sizes. That will be coming to the commissioners at our next work session, at our next meeting. So, the staff had to take their time to get into that, dig into it, and put something together for us on top of all their other projects. That's why there was a lack. It takes a little while. Um, until these changes take into effect, um, basically, we can do exactly what Commissioner Jarvis said. We could deny any new rezonings and stick to our land use plan, which is currently in place. And we will have several things coming to us, uh, working their way through. So, we expect that in, is it July, Kevin, or August, August, that the one acre will make it to the Board of Commissioners after we have our work session, goes back to staff, they massage the language, clean it up, and make sure that it's, it's right. And then it goes out to the planning board, and then it comes to us. So, it's gonna take a little while, but we are doing it. As I said, back in January or February, the board is going down that road, and we're gonna continue to go down that road, to look at MXR, where it should be placed, how it should be used. It does have a place here. As, I've talked to Mr. Menz about this, um, you know, recently, that we have a place for apartments. We have, when you move out of the home, you gotta go somewhere, and not everybody can afford to go into a new house. So, there is a place for that, for our fire, our EMS, our law enforcement, that are typically on the lower end of the pay scale, especially when they come in. But we don't need it right in Moayac. I'd love to see it further down the county. So, we're gonna go back and look at the Moayac small area plan, which I've talked about several times. We're gonna look at a small area plan down in the Barco Coinjock area as well. That may be a good place to talk about doing something down there. It's closer to our centralized services. Our schools are there. The sheriff's department's there. It's far enough away from the state line that it's not really making it a bedroom area for, um, people from Virginia to just move down here and drive through and transition through our county. So, we have a lot of good things, I think, going on for the future to try and minimize growth and, and place it where it makes sense to do some growth. And with that, that is all I have this evening, and I am gonna take a brief rest. Yes, sir.
Just real quick, you just reminded me of something when you mentioned Coinjock. Um, for individuals that, that don't remember this, but when there was, there was a Coast Guard station, um, in Coinjock, uh, there, and at that time, there were, uh, there were apartments, there was apartment complex right there next to the Coinjock Canal that housed the, uh, the Coast Guard men. So, there was an apartment building, that brick building right there, did, was an apartment building in Coinjock at one time, to take care of that need, because they couldn't afford the housing like that. So, it just, when the Coast Guard base went away, that went away.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, before we jump into your comments, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess, 'cause I drank too much tea at the Cooperative Extension. So, thank you all. All right. Called meeting back to order. Um, next up is the county manager's report. Apparently, no one wants to hear what Ike has to say, but us, and, and the school, the school's still here.
And, and, and I have nothing tonight to say.
What other person say? All right. Well, that's quick. That's easy.
Yep, and I'm gonna follow right behind the county manager, and I have nothing either.
You guys wanna go home tonight. I got, got that. All right. Next up is new business, uh, the consent agenda. Commissioner Beaumont, you wanted to break out part of that, have a discussion about one of the amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, specifically, the budget amendment referring to the temporary mobile plant and wastewater.
I think it's page nine.
It's this page.
Okay.
Eighteen.
The very last one, eighteen? Okay.
Um, and, Mr. Chairman, the reason I, I wanna pull it out is, um, and I guess it's, the question is, we're doing financial actions over an issue that was discussed during closed session. So, is the, can we talk about that issue? I, I guess we have to. Okay, so, all right. This budget amendment, as I understand it, is to remedy a situation going on at the Moayac wastewater plant.
That's correct. The board has already approved a budget amendment to fund the vast majority of the cost for a new temporary plant, uh, because there's a new treatment portion being added to the plant. This is the additional budget amendment necessary.
What, I, and Ike, um, you know, forgive me, I, we voted to do what with the Moayac plant?
The board has already adopted a budget amendment to fund, uh, the, the majority of what the cost will be for a temporary mobile plant to be brought in to the Moayac wastewater plant.
We did that a while ago, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we voted to bring in a, a mobile plant?
No, you, you, you voted to fund it.
Okay, so we voted to fund it. Did, do we vote to exercise that? My question is, I don't remember us having the discussion about the termination of the current contract, number one. I don't remember board action on, on that decision. In other words, no dis, we were informed, I was informed. I'm just gonna go on me. I'm not gonna lay claims to any other of the commissioners. I didn't know we were doing that. I found out, we sent out a letter in December at last meeting. I didn't know that we had voted to engage in this course of action until that was mentioned again at our last meeting. And so, um, from what I've been able to discover, there's no, uh, I haven't been able to find a record of where we, as a board, voted on either of those actions. And so, I'm somewhat...
It has not been the practice that the board, uh, takes, um, action or gives direction with regard to how contracts are managed once they've been entered into by the county. It has been the practice for at least the thirty years I've been around mostly, um, that the county commissioners, to the extent they're required to execute, or required to approve a contract, then it's up to management to manage the contract and to enforce the contract. And so, in this instance, when it became clear that this contractor has never and will not be able to perform, uh, the process began last fall with the notification of default and the opportunity to cure, which never happened. They were, they were unable or unwilling to cure the default. And so, we're to the next step of moving forward to mitigate the county's damages and to get another temporary plant in there, um, and to ask them to leave our site, our current contractor.
Okay, so, is there any potential legal whatever that might be a result of those actions? 'Cause from my perspective, and I don't know the details, but from my perspective, we, we potentially took a course of action that may incur some element of legal liability, legal lawsuit, legal actions, which we typically discuss, right, and vote on typically, which, how do you want us to proceed? I'm sorry, Commissioner Payman, did you wanna say something?
Well, I was just gonna say, we had a lawn maintenance contract that we, that was in place, and they, we had contractors weren't fulfilling their duties, and the, the county manager at the time terminated their contracts by, due to cause of not performing. And they threatened the county at the time for monies they thought owed to them. So, we had a similar situation with the lawn maintenance companies not too long ago.
Well, we also, the ABC store, you recall, had a contractor that failed to perform and fulfill the terms of the agreement, and the, uh, county staff took what steps were necessary to protect the county's interests under the contract, did certainly bring back to this board.
Recommendations for courses of action, got the board's buy-in.
And also, the board's endorsement of, of whether it would be willing to, and ultimately a final sell. a final settlement.
Okay, and I guess that's my point.
We are, we do have a closed session scheduled tonight to discuss some legal issues around this.
Okay, and then relative to the actions of undergoing waste management internally in the county, that's a departure from what we've been operating in specifically to the Moayak plant, as I'm aware of. You know, this is a shift, and all this was part of the documentation that was sent out, a course of action that was undergone. But, and I guess my question is, I don't, the first time again, I found out about this was last meeting, so...
Frankly, this is to protect the county's interest, and it's, in a large part, is to protect the county from extensive state fines, which are going to be handed down if the county does not take steps to end the failure of the current contractor and get our parameters back in line.
I am not debating, arguing that at all.
Hang on a second, hang on a second. I think that this is much better discussed in private when we go into closed session. We have that as an agenda item tonight, we can debate some of the other layers of this, so we're not crossing over and deal with it at that time. Now, I guess to your question, if we pull this out of the consent agenda and vote on it at a later time, would that affect you in any way, shape?
It will affect, it will further delay the county's ability to rectify the current circumstances at that plant.
Okay. Could we pull this out, have our closed session, and then vote on it when we go back into session?
I would ask at a minimum that the board do that. This is very, this is very critical.
Okay. All right, so, well then, let's do that. We'll hold that item out of the consent agenda for approval after our closed session, when we re-enter our regular meeting of the board before adjournment.
Do we need a motion for that?
Why don't we just move the whole consent agenda to the end?
Well, we could do that as well.
Do that, too. Then we know if we need to keep it out.
All right. So then we have to, we need a motion, I believe, to...
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion to move the, or go ahead, Ms. Keddie. Ladies first.
Make a motion to amend the agenda, to move the consent agenda to after our closed session.
Thank you. Kevin?
Our first.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. With that, we have to go into closed session, and you have the document.
Make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matter entitled 85 &amp; Sunny LLC versus Currituck County and EnviroLink versus Currituck County.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Gentlemen?